Effective September 1, 1991, Chapter 9 of the Laws of 1991 requires that we inform persons other than students who attend meetings within a school of the proper procedures to evacuate a building in an orderly and timely manner in the event of a fire emergency. If you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, you may exit through the doors in the rear of the auditorium, proceed across the hall, and exit through the doors which lead outside, or you may exit through the doors to the left or right, proceed across the hall, and exit through the doors which lead outside. Welcome, everyone. Tonight is a very special evening when we honor some of the best of our students, and so we will get busy with a couple of pieces of business first before we move on to that portion of the program. The Board of Education will move into exec-- oh, I'm sorry, we always did that. Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on April 1st, April 8th, April 9th, and April 24th, 2014, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the Treasures Report for the month of March 2014, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mr. Press, seconded by Mrs. Robori. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'll turn the meeting over to the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Skinnell, for his report.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hagan. I'm going to go over to the podium because my report includes one of the big reasons that we're here this evening, and that is to take the opportunity to honor fine students for their academic achievement, for their achievements in extracurricular activities, and for their athletic achievements as well. We're very proud of our students, and we set aside our time this evening to recognize them for what they've done and to celebrate their accomplishments. So I'm going to move to the podium.
We're not going to do the short film?
I am.
Oh, you are?
But I think that I'd kind of-- yeah. Let me just-- some housekeeping things. Because most everything is going to be directed this way, I would suggest that the people at the dais, if they would like, make themselves comfortable in the audience rather than have to strain your neck the entire time. The first order of business actually before we get into the regular student honorees is one of the last-minute accomplishments that we became aware of is two of our students at the high school, Omari Bent and Khalil Walcott, Walcott, rather, are both seniors at the high school, have won Best Overall Film at the 9th Annual Locust Valley Film Festival, and that took place on March 27th, 2014. By receiving Best Overall Film at the Locust Valley Film Festival, the Doritos commercial that they made received an official selection and has been accepted to the 2014 Long Island International Film Expo, and this international film expo will be held on July 9th through 17th at the Bellmore Movies. And it's about a minute and 40 seconds, so I'm going to show it to you.
Yo, what's good, bro? Man, yo, I'm hungry, yo. I got the munchies both these, son.
What's up?
I got a period two.
I got lunch at, like, period eight, yo.
Yo, you got anything to hold me down? My stomach sound like World War III.
Yeah, so I got something to hold you down, though.
What?
Let me see.
Yeah, it's good. It's all right. Yo, these chips were all right, but, yo, I don't know. Yo, you got anything that'll, yo, make my taste buds go wild, just go crazy, like?
Not like I do. You're going to go Jack. I don't think you're ready for these, son. Yo, the serving size on these are six chips. Six chips. Get out ready.
Yo, I'm ready for these, yo. Pass these, pass these real quick. I'm ready for these.
I'm in.
Yo! Yo! No! 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 Some people just stay cool.
Everybody hungry?
Yeah.
All right. For this portion of the program, Ms. O'Hagan, the Board Vice President is going to join me and help to congratulate the students. I'm sorry. Just a couple of housekeeping things. We do ask that people stay for the whole thing. We are going to have a reception in the dining hall afterwards where you can have some cookies and something to drink. That is also the place where you can actually pick up your certificates. So the students are going to come up here, their names will be called, they're going to be recognized, your actual certificates will be distributed during the refreshments. I also remind the students that come up quickly, okay? Don't stroll, we want to move things along, and when you come up, you'll be recognized by your principal, a teacher, or a coach, and then you're going to come up onto the risers because we do like to get a picture of each of the groups as well. And I'll move you around a little bit to make sure that that happens just right, okay? I think that's all my housekeeping. So, the first presenter will be Mr. Marr, the principal of our middle school, to recognize some students for their accomplishments.
Good evening, everybody. It's an honor to be with you this evening with so many esteemed scholars from our high school and middle school and from some of our elementary schools. It is my great honor to be able to introduce our District Spelling B champions. When I say your name, please join us in the front, and we'll have a photo taken on the risers with Mr. Skinnell and Mrs. O'Hagan. Danielle Palmer, if you're here, please join us. Thank you. Amber Williams, please join us. Davis Joseph, please join us. Here comes Ashton. Ion Maravilla, please join us in the front. And from our middle school, three-time winner Malaya Press, please join us in the front. My congratulations to each of our school's District Spelling B champions. Congratulations. I also have the honor of introducing our National History Day Long Island Competition winner. I'd like to introduce-- I apologize-- Delina Fraser, please come up front. Delina was a winner at the Long Island Regional Competition and was nominated for a Special Women in History Award at State Competition in Cooperstown. And I tell the middle school students that it's always of particular interest to me when they dress better than I do, and you're dressed beautifully, so congratulations. I'm also honored to introduce our winners of National French Contest, known as La Grande Concorde, and I introduce Orlie Perret and Laura Sanville to the front, please. These two young ladies finish in the top ten nationwide in the scoring on this exam, so congratulations, ladies. It is my distinct pleasure at this time to introduce my colleague and a wonderful mentor to me, Ms. Susan Norris, the principal of the high school.
Thanks. Good evening. I'm proud to be part of this very special night honoring such deserving students. It's always a privilege to share their achievements with you. I must tell you that it would be literally impossible to tell you all of these students' accomplishments in just one evening. It would be hundreds of pages. However, please allow me to share some of their highlights with you. Students, when you are introduced, please go to the risers and remain there until all ten students come up. I would also invite parents and guardians to stand. Ladies and gentlemen, Baldwin's Class of 2014, Top Ten Students, beginning with the 10th-ranked student. Our 10th-ranked student, Valerie Akilay. Valerie is an accomplished student who is highly intelligent and goal-oriented. She has distinguished herself due to her enthusiasm, passion for learning, and leadership. Motivated by her dream of becoming a doctor, Valerie seized every opportunity inside and outside of the classroom to ensure success in her future endeavors. She participated in Shadow Days, joined the Medical Explorers, attended George Washington University's prestigious program called "A Day in the Life of a Medical Student," and she entered the Explorer Science Competition with a sign language translation glove that she invented. Valerie gives back to her community through her many altruistic endeavors, such as fundraising, promoting charitable events, raising awareness, volunteering in hospitals and church, encouraging students to make wiser decisions. Upon reflecting on her time at Baldwin, Valerie says, "I am truly grateful for the time I've spent at Baldwin Senior High School. Baldwin is filled with many opportunities which have expanded my education, and I have been fortunate to be able to learn from such encouraging teachers who have taught me lessons I can use beyond the scope of the classroom. In addition, I have been given many chances through Baldwin's extensive courses to challenge myself and create a strong academic future." Valerie will be attending Brandeis University. Congratulations. Our 9th-ranked student, Dylan Samus. and scholastic aptitude. His natural intelligence and curiosity often compelled him to preview course material and do extra coursework in order to excel. His teachers and peers found him to be a welcome addition to their classes, taking on new learning experiences and challenges, and inspiring everyone with his positive attitude. Dylan is so well-rounded. He's a gifted musician known for his precision and passion for music. He has received numerous music accolades and awards. He gives back to his community. He is a compassionate and caring young man. Besides his family opening their home to friends without a place to stay after Hurricane Sandy, Dylan worked long hours with his father, helping his neighbors restore heat and rebuild their lives. And during these difficult times, Dylan's support and reassurance helped them to recover. Dylan has prepared himself to excel in all of his future endeavors. He says, and I quote, "My teachers challenged me, my friends encouraged me, and I will take Baldwin with me." Dylan will be attending CUNY City College Honors Program. Congratulations. Our 8th-ranked student, Michelle Messina. Michelle is a conscientious, intelligent, and diligent student. She demonstrated her ambition and drive by challenging herself with the most rigorous courses, resulting in her stellar academic record. Her passion for the sciences define her. She has taken any opportunity to learn as much as she can about science. She was accepted to Georgetown University Forensic Science Institute's program, where she was exposed to actual hands-on crime scene analysis, and she worked with distinguished members in the field. She attended Shadow Days and participated in engineering sight visits. Her biology teachers said that Michelle's peers turned to her for help with the most difficult topics because she engages them with her enthusiasm and deep grasp of biology. She is a talented athlete, musician, linguist, dancer, and poet. Varsity softball, wind symphony, pep band, jazz band, mentoring, AIDS peer mediator, environmental and humanitarian, community service projects, and sports tell you what a diversified and well-rounded student she is. She's fully prepared for the future. She would like me to share this quote with you. Baldwin High School has taught me responsibility and leadership through the clubs and activities I have participated in. Sorry. Michelle will be attending SUNY Binghamton. Congratulations. Our 7th-ranked student, Wesley Pennycook. Wesley is a young man who has made significant contributions. He's demonstrated leadership, achieved academic excellence, and challenged himself with the most rigorous courses. He is a role model for other students. He loves helping others, often holding study groups for his peers. He was selected by his peers to be the president of the key club, and his teachers selected him to be an AIDS peer educator. This is due to his commitment to his school and his community. Wesley attended leadership workshops in Albany and participated in leadership conferences that promoted self-esteem and positive decision-making. One of Wesley's teachers explained that he couldn't have wished for a more hard-working, well-prepared student with such talent, strong mind, and excellent attitude. He plays in the wind symphony, marching band, and pep band. He's a poet, linguist, history scholar, varsity scholar-player, and humanitarian. His unlimited potential will ensure that he reaches his goals and finds success in the future. In his own words, "Baldwin High School has provided me with a diverse curriculum that is challenging. Overcoming these challenges has given me the confidence and maturity to succeed." Wesley will be attending the University of Pennsylvania. Congratulations. Our 6th-ranked student, Venite Vishwana. Venite is-- is he up here? Sorry. Jumped and done. Venite is a model student who has taken the most rigorous courses. He's goal-oriented, open-minded, and highly intelligent, but yet humble and collaborative. His goal to become a doctor motivated him to participate in sight visits, Shadow Days, lab experiences, health fairs, symposiums at many hospitals, and even a DNA lab. Becoming the co-chair of our gold medal resiliency challenging team, serving as a mentor, and organizing a medical terminology Scrabble tournament for the middle students are some of his accomplishments. He successfully balanced academics, science bowl competitions, Olympiads, academians, quiz, and science bowl, environmental and art for charity projects, tennis, and community service endeavors. One of his teachers said that of all the students she's worked with in her many years of teaching, that Venite represents everything a teacher could ask for. He inspires us, and he would like me to share this quote with you. "All easy problems have already been solved. It is the hard ones that require good judgment. Good judgment comes from experience, which sometimes comes from poor judgment. Don't let the fear of poor judgment make you a nobody. Bite off more than you can chew, then chew it. Dream more than you can dream, then fulfill it." Venite will be attending Brandeis University. Congratulations. Our 5th-ranked student, Harini Nouri. Harini is a mature, insightful, and intelligent young woman. Her passion for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics drew her to academic competitive teams where she applied her research and her critical thinking skills and helped Baldwin earn many, many awards. Her interests are eclectic, reflecting her depth and creativity. She is a true humanitarian. She is classically trained in ballet, Indian dance, and music. She is an exceptional violinist, a peer mentor, and she has done countless hours of all types of community service. She has earned numerous accolades for her innovative math, engineering, and science achievements, which are highlighted by her acceptance to the prestigious National Grid Internship Pipeline Program and her awards from Northrop Grumman Innovation Challenge, Reconstruction and Resiliency Project, and the Long Island Math Fair. Her diverse school, community, and state-level leadership experiences will serve her well in the future. In her own words, "Baldwin High School is the beacon of success and has taught me that education is powerful and not only gives us knowledge, but connects us to the world. Failing is not always failure. Embrace doubt and strive for clarity." And she will be attending Stony Brook University Wise Program. Congratulations. Our 4th-ranked student, Vikram Vishwana. Vikram is an exceptionally intelligent, self-motivated young man. His passion for math, science, and helping people go along with his career goal of becoming a doctor. To prepare, he has taken the most rigorous courses and participated in an array of medical academy sight visits, Shadow Days, lab experiences, health fairs, and symposiums at several hospitals and a DNA lab. He has won many prestigious awards by participating in the Reconstruction and Resiliency Challenge, as well as several other challenging math, science, and language tournaments on the county, regional, and national levels, and he excelled due to his sophisticated critical thinking and poise under pressure. His contributions to our school and community are numerous. Being someone who is interested and aware of global affairs and wanting to make a difference, he has completed countless hours of service. He's mentored younger students and led peer study groups. Clearly, he is a well-rounded scholar who is prepared to succeed in his future endeavors. He shares these insightful words with us this evening. "The moment you quit is usually the moment right before the miracle happens. It's often the darkest skies we see the brightest stars. Don't wait for the perfect moment. Take the moment and make it perfect. After all, it's kind of fun to do the impossible." And Vikram will be attending Boston University. Congratulations. Our 3rd-ranked student, Keon Vaquille. I don't believe he was able to be with us tonight, but if you'll allow me to share Keon's quote and let you know the college he will be attending. In Keon's words, "Baldwin has taught me to think for myself above all. It has taught me that what is popular is not always right, and what is right is not always popular." He will be attending Boston University. 2nd in the class, this auditorian, Richard Henry. Richard is a scholar of the highest caliber. He is passionate and intense, with an insatiable thirst for knowledge. He stands out as an intellectual and a leader due to his exacting standards, disciplined approach to rigorous work, and aptitude. Richard has the utmost respect for all people. He's a very special young man with strong family values. He's wise, yet humble, and highly regarded by peers and his instructors. He has cultivated his academic, athletic, and music skills to the highest levels. His diverse pursuits have been impressive. His positive attitude and vision are inspiring. Poetry, music, athletics, language, science, and math honors have been bestowed on Richard. His extracurricular interests really reflect his desire to help others, his concern for our environment, and aptitude and passion for academic competition and research, a collaborative personality, and a magnanimous nature. Richard is a polished and refined young man destined for greatness. Richard's quote confirms what has been said, and I will quote right now. "Failure simply provides more time to produce an even bigger success. The delay grows shorter as your desire to succeed grows stronger. Four years at Baldwin High School has made me consider failure as an opportunity and success as a necessity." Richard will be attending Princeton University. Congratulations. First in the class, our valedictorian, Brian Tocasey. Okay, everyone's up here now. Brian is a distinguished scholar with unlimited potential, a tenacious intellect, and is steadfast, possessing a steadfast hunger for knowledge. He has gone above and beyond our most rigorous AP and honors courses, opting to complete an independent study in computer science with his advanced placement mathematics teacher. His extracurricular interests really reflect his desire to help others, his concern for our environment, and aptitude and passion for academic competition and research, a collaborative personality, and a magnanimous nature. Richard is a polished and refined young man destined for greatness. Richard's quote confirms what has been said, and I will quote right now. "Failure simply provides more time to produce an even bigger success. The delay grows shorter as your desire to succeed grows stronger. Four years at Baldwin High School has made me consider failure as an opportunity and success as a necessity." Richard will be attending Princeton University. First in the class, our valedictorian, Brian Segase. Okay, everyone's up here now. Brian is a distinguished scholar with unlimited potential, a tenacious intellect, and possessing a steadfast hunger for knowledge. He has gone above and beyond our most rigorous AP and honors courses, opting to complete an independent study in computer science with his advanced placement mathematics teacher. Students and teachers have the utmost respect for Brian. When he was named valedictorian over the loudspeaker, the cheers could be heard throughout the building. Brian's abilities and talents have allowed him to achieve excellence in multiple venues. His passion for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics were enhanced by his participation in the STEM Engineering Academy programs. He's attended symposiums and worked with Northrop Grumman and has done an internship with National Grid. His extensive extracurricular community service, music, athletic, theater, and leadership endeavors only augment his remarkable record. Brian is modest about his personal success. He is a young man of remarkable character and integrity. He's a role model for all students, and he has been a source of pride for our school and community. His superior aptitude certainly sets him apart. He intends to study computer science, and with his superior aptitude, his perseverance, and vision, he is bound to achieve greatness. In his own words, "Baldwin High School has provided a wealth of admirable teachers and timeworthy extracurricular activities that have effectively provided me with a base of interests and knowledge to expand from." Brian will be attending Cornell University. I'm sorry, I understand there's a little buzz from the microphone. Is this a little better? Yes, I'll hold it here then. I now have the honor of introducing Baldwin's AP Scholars. These students have completed three or more AP exams with grades of three or higher. Students, when I call your name, please go and take a place on the risers and remain there until all the AP Scholars come up. I would also ask their parents to stand. And if you could please, I know it's difficult, hold your applause until the entire list of names has been read. Valerie Achille, Matthew Barber, Vanessa Barone, Natalia Barr, Stephanie Kando, Kevin Chung, Rachel Clark, Railton Clavin, Joseph Carrato, Kira Dalton, Eve Clark, Duvalary, Brandon Hermes, Matthew Hines, Darius Inglises, Sean Kretschmer, Virginia Lee, Stacy Lugo, Omer Malik, Michelle Messina, Harini Nori, Rhea Ramchatar, I'm sorry, Simone Shirak, Rebecca Valen, Kimberly Villegas, Tyler Warner, Kristen Watts, Victoria Whitman, and Dewey Yabo. And now Baldwin's AP Scholars with honors. These students have earned an average grade of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and grades three or higher on four or more of these exams. Can we please follow the very same directions? Students, find a place on the risers. Parents are welcome to stand, and please hold the applause till all the names are John Ajaka Rosado, Evan Barnett, Rebecca Drew, Adam Hartman, Wesley Pennekook, Miren Sabatou, And now Baldwin's AP Scholars with distinction. These students earned an average grade of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and grades of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Again, let's follow the same instructions. Richard Henry, Tyler King, Wendy Markert, Jonathan Mutu, Brian Segase, Dylan Samus, It is now my great honor to introduce to you Dr. Cynthia Siniek, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. It's my distinct pleasure this evening to stand in for Mr. Chiarella and award the recipients that I am about to proceed with their information. I will call down each recipient, and would you please come down and stand and remain standing until all have been brought down front. Liam O'Malley, please come to the front. Liam O'Malley has accumulated a diverse resume of accomplishments while being a student at Baldwin High School. Throughout his years, fine art has been both a passion and reward for Liam. He completed the Fine Arts Sequential Course Curriculum, as well as a multitude of elective art courses. Liam additionally worked in the arts outside of school, serving as a shop assistant at the Brooklyn Design and Fabrication Center. He excelled at courses such as figure drawing and silk screening and was inducted to the National Art Honor Society in grades 11 and 12. His AP art teacher, Ms. Lemer Kelly, writes, "Watching Liam mature as a visual artist since his freshman year of art has itself been a work of art. Originally, he was an intense renderer and drawer, but as of his senior year, the energy that he puts forth as he makes his mark has turned him into a painter. To be able to be so versatile and successful at so many different mediums is a remarkable achievement in a lifetime, let alone your high school career." We recognize Liam tonight for his outstanding achievement, receiving the Senior Scholarship Award from the Arts Supervisors Association this past March 16th at the All-County Scholarship Breakfast preceding the opening of the All-County Art Show, where his work was exhibited at Adelphi College. Peter Rafferty, please come forward. Is Peter's not here? Well, we honor Peter Rafferty tonight for his selection and performance as a member of the New York All-State Wind Ensemble, which in essence labels Peter as the best baritone saxophone player in the state. So congratulations to Peter Rafferty and his family. Is Dr. Plans messing around with the slideshow? Evan Barnett has earned the highest ranks as a student at Baldwin High School. Evan was inducted into the National Honor Society in grades 11 and 12, earned the designation of High Honor Roll for grades 10 and 11, and was awarded the Distinction of AP Scholar with Honor in grade 11. As regards to his musical accomplishments, Evan has been a member of the TRIAM Music Honor Society. He was the recipient of the Jean North Scholarship for Vocal Study in grade 9 and has been a member of the All-County Choir every year since, including grades 10, 11, and 12. He currently serves as treasurer and section leader for the Baldwin High School Honors Concert Choir and recently starred in the role of the wizard in the high school production of The Wiz. Evan additionally participates as a lead singer in the High School Barbershop Quartet and Show Choir Ensemble. In previous years at the high school, he was a member of the Vocal Ensemble Sole Definition. Evan has been an avid NISMA performer each year at Baldwin High School, grades 9 through 11. Ms. Simko writes, "Evan Barnett is a natural leader that commands the room both vocally and academically. He has earned the highest respect from his peers, and he never fails to set the example of an excellent singer with a positive attitude toward all the works we perform. Tonight, we honor Evan for his selection and performance as a member of the prestigious New York All-State Choir, performing this past December at the Kodak Eastman Theater in Rochester, New York." Joseph Carrato. Please come forward. Joseph Carrato was notified earlier this year that he was to be the recipient of the prestigious Long Island Arts Alliance Award of Merit. To earn this award, a senior must have an unweighted grade point average of 90 or above and then must have tremendous musical credentials to compete. Joe has been a bassoon player in the Baldwin High School Honors Wind Symphony Program. Outside of school, he performs for the Long Island Youth Orchestra. Joe currently serves as vice president of the High School Wind Symphony and additionally sings with the High School Honors Concert Choir. He also participates singing in the small group vocal ensembles, the High School Vocal Jazz Ensemble, and the Barbershop Quartet. Mr. Dunn informs me that Joe Carrato came to Baldwin High School in ninth grade as a saxophonist in the concert band. When he was targeted for the potential bassoonist, he not only obliged, but he hit the ground running. He came in the next day and reported that he played the bassoon for five hours, all in the first night. This commitment has never lessened. Joe does anything and everything asked of him in the music department, and he does it professionally, but always with a smile. He continues to play sax in jazz ensemble and played multiple reed instruments as an orchestra pit musician for the shows. Joe even plays trombone sometimes in pep band, a musical jack-of-all-trades, to say the least. We honor Joseph tonight for his selection as a member of the New York All-State Symphony Band and his performance as principal bassoonist with the same all-state ensemble. Congratulations to Joseph Carrato and his family. Richard Henry, please come forward. Richard Henry, congratulations. Richard has accumulated a long list of honors and distinctions at Baldwin High School. Richard has been a student leader earning membership as an All-American Scholar, High Honor Roll with Distinction, Scholar-Athlete, and acceptance into the National Achievement Scholarship Program. As regards to his music accomplishments, Richard is pleasantly referred to by Mr. Dunn as King Richard. He has been a member of the All-County Band for grades 11 and 12 and the All-County Orchestra for grade 10. Richard was inducted into the TRIAM Music Honor Society in grade 9 and has been a member for grades 10 through 12. He currently serves as president of the Honors High School Wind Symphony. Mr. Dunn has labeled Richard "the true model of consistency and hard work." Richard is the most mature, honest, dedicated, and polite high school student that I have ever come to know. Richard's teachers and peers could not have more respect for him. He leads both by example and with verbal command and has been an inspiration to those of us around him every day. We honor Richard Henry, King Richard tonight, for his selection and performance, I couldn't resist, with the 2013-14 New York All-State Band in Rochester, New York. Congratulations to King Richard and his royal family. Hannah Marrero, please come forward. Hannah Marrero has been incredibly visible throughout her years in Baldwin. She is a poised but humble young lady with a gift for singing and a talent for acting. Hannah earned a USTAN Scholarship last summer and studied for seven weeks at the USTAN Summer Institute for the Performing Arts. She stepped in and served as the president of the Honors Concert Choir this year and additionally performs with three of the high school's small group vocal ensembles. Hannah has been a member of the TRIAM Music Honor Society for grades 10 through 12 and currently serves as president of this year's chapter. Hannah's musicianship knows no boundaries, as she is also a gifted tuba player performing in the Honors Wind Symphony Band. The theater at Baldwin High School has been another place to call home for Hannah, as she earned leading roles in Jekyll and Hyde, Fame, Once Upon a Mattress, and just last month, The Wiz. Ms. Simko worked with Hannah Marrero at the middle school and high school and writes. Hannah is able to transform any piece she performs, classical or musical theater, interpreting its message in a way that is beyond her years. Her voice exhibits natural warmth, focus, and registration, although Hannah is the most humble about her talent, her ability, and her accomplishments. We honor Hannah Marrero this evening for her selection and performance with the 2013-14 All- All-State Choir, performing at the Kodak Eastman Theater in Rochester this past December at the New York All-State Festival. Congratulations, Hannah. It is my distinct pleasure at this time to introduce Mr. Ed Ramirez, our Director of Physical Education and Athletics.
All right, before I start real quick, Joseph Carrato, the story about the five hours with the bassoon, I have a feeling if we asked your parents, that story would have a different twist from their point of view. Five hours of practice, first time playing it. Congratulations to all the students that were recognized here tonight. I do want to recognize the parents too because they are the driving force behind every kid here and their success. So congratulations to the parents. Thank you to the Board of Education, Mr. Scannell, District Administration for recognizing the accomplishments and for being the support behind the students and these programs. And personally, for the students that were up here and the students that are about to come up, it's a personal honor to have them watched, having been able to watch them grow over the last four years and see how far they've come and how successful they are. The first coach that we'll be calling up here tonight will be our varsity field hockey coach, Mr. Mike Hoover.
I'd like to call Sam Nelson forward. A successful varsity athletic career is not always defined by statistics. To be sure, Sam can validate every honor she has ever received, including being selected as Nassau County's unsung hero as a sophomore, all-conference as a junior, and all-county as a senior. She's been a three-year starter for us, playing every position on the field except goalie. As a co-captain, she had an unbelievable sense of leadership, dedication, and discipline. Our team had some very good field hockey players, but we also relied on some very young girls who at crucial times may have thought they were in over their head had it not been for Sam. She made it her business to make sure everyone on the team shared the same goals towards success, whether you were a four-year starter or a freshman trying to figure out a way to fit in. She was everybody's rock. Sam will be bringing her strengths and talents to UMass Dartmouth next year, where she will also be a member of the field hockey team.
Mr. Hoover will also be presenting the next student for boys lacrosse.
Will Tyler Warner come forward? Tyler Warner did everything in his power to make his senior year a special one. In the offseason leading up to this year, Tyler would spend hours pushing himself, whether it was stick drills on the wall or tirelessly shooting lacrosse balls at a goal hours at a time. As coaches, we knew that our team had a very special individual. Some of his credentials are as follows. He was a four-year starter on the lacrosse team, playing both midfield and attack. He was captain of this year's team. He has led the team in goals and assists the past two years, this year tallying 34 goals and 14 assists. As a sophomore, he was All-County Honorable Mention. As a junior, he was all-county. We don't know what he's going to get this year, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be good. To describe how Tyler plays, I would have to say this. Tyler Warner leaves everything on the field for his teammates and coaches. He is a player who can ignite a team with his speed and offensive ability like very few I have ever seen. First and foremost, Tyler is just a competitor. This goes for off the field as well. Tyler is president of Athletes Helping Athletes. He is a member of the National Honor Society. He is a member of the Key Club. He is a student in Baldwin High School's Medical Academy. He coaches lacrosse in the local PAL program. He brings his competitive nature into the classroom by earning the rank of number 20 in the senior class. Tyler will be attending Yale in the fall, where he will not only be playing lacrosse, he will not only be playing lacrosse, but he will be studying science in a pre-med track. Tyler Warner.
We're going to have Tyler stay up and coming up is Coach Steve Carroll, head football coach.
Mr. Warner and Mrs. Warner, if you just stand up, please. I'm going to make a little joke here. In Tyler's spare time, he played football. Tyler was a two-year starter for our varsity football team. As a junior, he led the team to the county championship. As a senior, he played quarterback. And for those of you who watch football a lot, quarterbacks play just quarterback. Well, Tyler Warner played every position on our field. And in our opening game of the season this year, I think it was Coach Catapano had the bright idea of saying, "Let's let him return to opening kickoff, see how he does." And I'm like, "No, we can't do that, absolutely not. Quarterback doesn't do anything but play quarterback. We kick the ball off, he runs it back 80 yards for a touchdown." I say, "Great move, Steve Carroll, what a great call." But anyway, Tyler played every position on the field for us this year. I said he was a team captain, he was a News 12 Scholar-Athlete, all-county football player. He won every conceivable award in football that you could win academically. He won Academic All-Conference, he won Golden 11, which is the top 11 Scholar-Athletes in Nassau County football. And then, yes, absolutely. And then, he ended up winning the top Scholar-Athlete for the large schools AA, the number-one Scholar-Athlete in the state of New York for football. And finally, as we were talking about competitive edge, this year, I'm also a phys ed teacher in his classes, and we have a volleyball tournament every year and a basketball tournament every year, and his team managed to win both of those tournaments. So as you heard also, Tyler will be attending Yale University in the fall.
Unfortunately, Coach Burton could not be here tonight, and the only thing more unfortunate than his absence is his handwriting that I have to read right now. My eyes are starting to go. I'm going to do the best that I can here. I'd like to call up two of his varsity soccer players, Caitlin Ari and Kelsey Cohen, please. Caitlin is a senior, she's a three-year varsity player and a two-year starter. Her junior year, she was injured, did not play, but this year made up for that missed time. She was captain, she anchored the defense this year, playing sweeper, which is outer position, but she did that for the betterment of the team. She did an unbelievable job playing defense while also scoring three goals from that position. She is a sports night captain and a pleasure to have as an athlete and a pleasure to coach. Most importantly, she has a 110 GPA. She's a National Honor Society member and an Art Honor Society member. She is ranked in the top 20 of her class. She'll be attending the University of Delaware in the fall and majoring in athletic training. Kelsey Cohen is a junior, a three-year varsity player, and a two-year varsity starter. She was named unsung hero as a sophomore. She was voted Player of the Year in the conference this year. Had a career-high and a team-high 19 goals, most goals in any conference this year in the county. She was second in all, excuse me, she was second in all of Nassau County in goals scored. Most impressive, the, most impressive, give me a second. Okay, I got it. Most impressive is that this is her second sport. She has already committed to the University of Cincinnati to play lacrosse on a scholarship. She is a tremendous hard worker with great work ethic, and we're lucky to have her for one more year, Kelsey Cohen. Okay, and now for boys' basketball, and I get an extra person to read about now here. I'd like to call up for boys' basketball, Mike King Richardson, DeMarco Barnes, and Shane Gatling. I'll start off with Mike King. Mike King is a senior, a two-year varsity player, a two-year starter, captain of this year's team. He averaged 10 points, six assists, five rebounds, and two steals. He was runner-up in the voting for conference Player of the Year. This year, he moved to the point guard position and played very unselfish. He achieved two triple-doubles during the year, for those that aren't basketball fanatics. That means he averaged, or he had 10 or more points, rebounds, and assists. In the fall, he will be attending Dowling on a basketball scholarship and will be very missed as part of the basketball program. Mike King Richardson. DeMarco Barnes. DeMarco is a senior, a two-year varsity player, and a captain of this year's team. He finished the season averaging 13 points, three assists, three rebounds, and two steals. Had a career-high 24 points and a career-high in three-pointers, six this year. One of the best three-point shooters on Long Island. Hit at least one three-pointer in every game, that's 19 games they played for the year this year. Also had 51 three-pointers in this season over 19 games. This is a tremendous accomplishment. He is a true shooter, shooting 38% from the three-point range. He also will be missed next year as part of the team, DeMarco Barnes. Lastly, but not least, Shane Gatling. Sophomore, averaged 13 points, four rebounds, three assists. What he did this year as a first-year player in the program was great. Had a team-high 29 points in a game this year, hit 48 three-pointers this year, had seven in one game. Second, we're going to skip that one. In one quarter of the final game versus Freeport, where we were down by as many as 16 points, Shane had 18 of the team-high 28 points in the second half for a comeback win. That was the first round of the playoffs, and Coach Burton wants to make sure everyone knows how lucky he is to have this young man back for two more years, Shane Gatling. Congratulations. Our next coach is Coach Natalie Hamilton, head varsity coach of the girls' volleyball team.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to honor Loren McKenzie and Bridget Walsh, if you would like to come up, girls. So I'm going to start off with Loren. So Loren, affectionately known as Lala by her teammates, is a senior middle blocker and co-captain of this year's volleyball team. The 6'2" former swimmer, who for our team's sake had converted to a fully-committed volleyball player, has been a rising star and player to watch from the beginning of her volleyball career. When I first met Loren and learned that she had only begun playing volleyball as a 10th grader, I simply could not believe it. With her athleticism, stature, and coordination, she was a natural. Through her dedication and drive, Loren participated in private training, workouts, and club volleyball offseason, which caused her to excel in the sport by leaps and bounds and in ways that other athletes would take years for them to achieve. Coming into this season, Loren was one of the most intimidating players in the conference. Opposing teams would design their defense around her, and to any athlete, that is a true compliment. While sporting her creative game-day hairstyles, Loren recorded 60 solo blocks and 150 kills this season, often igniting our team's momentum and helped carry our team to the county finals. I can honestly say it was an honor coaching Loren these past two seasons. The Baldwin volleyball program will truly miss her as she continues her volleyball career on a full scholarship to Division I American University. I would like to also honor Bridget. Bridget is a junior outside hitter and co-captain of this year's volleyball team. Standing at 5'3", Bridget may not look like the typical volleyball player, but boy, does she prove everyone wrong from the moment she steps onto the court. With her incredible leadership, focus, positivity, loud cheering, funny commentary, and athleticism, Bridget is a spark plug and a standout on the team. Always helping her teammate in any way she could, you would often find Bridget running alongside someone, cheering them on to finish their conditioning long after she was done, or giving helpful tips to other teammates and even younger JV players. As one of the most consistent players on the court, Bridget played all-around and is a threat offensively and defensively. Leading the team with 209 digs this season and second-most on the team in kills, it's no wonder why Bridget earned all-county honors. We're lucky to have Bridget for another season at Baldwin, and I cannot wait to see what next season brings. Congratulations, girls.
Next coach, girls' basketball varsity coach, Mr. Tom Catapano.
Good evening and congratulations to all the award winners. I'm going to call up three of my four athletes, Mariah Butler, Tyra Harrison, and Lamise Elgama. The fourth athlete who could not be with us tonight is Tiara Place. To give you an idea of the type of season our girls had, there is 120, approximately 120 public schools on Long Island, big schools, small schools, double A, B, C. Out of those 120 schools, our girls were the number-one ranked team, public school on Long Island this year. These young ladies went 17 and 4, and they picked up, for some of them, their second Long Island championship in four years. 12-0 in the conference and an unbelievable year once again. Just to give you another idea, there are seven all-county awards given out to our conference. This year's team, out of the seven awards given to the seven teams in our conference, our girls picked up four out of those seven awards, to give you an idea of how our girls picked up four out of those seven awards, to give you an idea of how strong of a season they had. Okay, now to the individuals. I'll start with sophomore Lamis Elgama. Lamis was, has been on varsity since eighth grade. This was her first year starting, and boy, did she explode onto the scene. She was All-County this year. She actually wound up being the double-A Nassau County Player of the Year in the playoffs, and to win that award as a sophomore is really unheard of. Two weeks ago, we found out that she made second-team All-Long Island, which is given to the top 20 players on Long Island. She was one of only three sophomores on the island to get that award. She played her best basketball towards the end of the season. In the playoffs, she had a double-double in every single game. And the best part about this is she's gonna be back for another two years. Yeah. She actually, since I've been here, she broke a school record. In the Long Island Championship game, she had 15 points and 23 rebounds in that game. Since I've been here, that's never been done. We've never had a kid, especially in that caliber of a game, grab 23 rebounds. So that was unbelievable. Two weeks ago, she was offered a full scholarship to Hofstra University as a sophomore. That's unbelievable. She's got schools like Siena, Providence. She has numerous Division One schools that are very interested. So the sky is the limit for this kid. Tireless worker, tremendous student-athlete, AP classes. So proud of how far she's come in such a short time and very excited for the future. Congratulations, Tyra Place, I'll go to next. She's an All-County junior. Unfortunately, she could not make it here tonight. Just another tremendous kid, also getting numerous college offers. Her greatest strength is her versatility. At 5'10", she's very difficult for teams to guard, because if you put a guard on her, she can go down on the block and post you up, and if you put a big kid on her, she blows right by them. Biggest moment for her this year was Long Island Championship game. We're down one point with 50 seconds left, 47-46. Out of a timeout, she comes out, makes a great left-handed layup, puts us up one, and we wound up winning that game by three points. So congratulations to Tyra Place. Last, my two seniors. We'll start with Tyra Harrison. Four-year varsity player, two-time All-County, not only this year, but also as a junior. Last year's team MVP, team captain this year, averaged about 10 points per game. The thing, though, that I'll always remember about Tyra is her work ethic. I cannot think of one day that she stepped in the gym, whether it be a game or practice, where she did not give you 110 percent. And as her coach, I was so proud to be able to coach her. She has left this program a better place, and she has led through example, and all these younger kids got a chance to play with her. And she has set such a great example for this school and for this community. I'm so proud of her, and it's tough when these kids leave after you've built such a relationship with them over the years. This is a girl that I'll never forget, and I'm so happy to say that she's gonna be moving on to SUNY Oneonta, and she'll also be playing basketball. And I wish her the best of luck. Congratulations, Tyra. And last but not least, senior, four-year varsity player, two-time captain, two-time All-County, Mariah Butler. Mariah did pretty well this year. She racked up pretty much every award you could rack up. She, like I said, she was All-County for the second time in a row. She was the conference Player of the Year. She wound up winning the Nassau County double-A Player of the Year, the overall Player of the Year. Like I said, two weeks ago, like Lamis, she was nominated to be on the second-team All-Long Island team, which is one of the top 20 players around. Tremendous, tremendous leader. Both Tyra and Mariah were really, they were rocks for this program. And she also left this program a way better place than it was before she came in. The thing I'll always remember about Mariah is she's probably the hardest-working kid both on and off the court that I have ever had the pleasure to coach. She spent so much time on the court and then off the court, and she made sure that she put academics first. And I'll never forget that about her. And the thing I'm most proud about is about last month, we found out that she was accepted into Cornell University. So it's safe to say that she'll be going to an Ivy League school in September, and I just wanna say congratulations to the girls. This is, it's so much more than basketball. It's an all-year-round commitment, and I challenged them to leave a legacy in the Baldwin community, but this group left a legacy throughout Long Island, and nobody can take
Our next coach is Ms. Nicole Lean, and she is the varsity head coach for girls' lacrosse.
Good evening. This, tonight I get to present two amazing young ladies, Kelsey Cohen and Jessica Margowitz. Can you please come up? I'm gonna start with Kelsey. Kelsey has been a starter on the girls' varsity lacrosse team for the past four years. She has led the team in both goals and assists and has been a large role, has played a large role in the success of our program. This season, Kelsey was named one of the three team captains and showed great leadership on and off the field. As a junior, Kelsey has committed to Cincinnati University and will continue her lacrosse career there. I look forward to one more great season with Kelsey at Baldwin Next, Jessica Margowitz. Jessica has been a starter on the girls' varsity lacrosse team for the past five years. When Jessica started playing for me in eighth grade, I knew that I was extremely lucky to have such an amazing athlete, and to think I'd have her for another four seasons. She has demonstrated hard work, determination, and dedication to not only her team, but to her school as well. This year, Jessica was a team captain of not only the girls' varsity lacrosse team, but she served as a Blue Sports Night captain as well. BTV. Jessica will truly be missed next year when she attends Malloy College on an athletic scholarship. I cannot wait to hear of all the great things that she achieves at Malloy. I know that she will do great things.
Our next coach is Mr. Rich Carroll, and he will be bringing up some of his boys' indoor track and field athletes.
Good evening. Malik White, Kevin Atkinson, and Pascal Bastian, Tayshaun Harris, and I don't know if Emerson's here or not. Well, the only thing indoor, about indoor track is the meets. Everything else is outside during the winter, and it's tough working out outside in the rain and the snow, but this year, because of all the bad weather, we did manage to work out some in the sixth building. I just would like to... These guys are the fastest guys you're gonna see anywhere. These guys are the fastest guys I've ever had the pleasure to coach, plus the fact that I'm in awe every day when I come down here. Just, you know, the workouts, the meets that we go to, the way they represent themselves. They had a great indoor season. We were coming home from our first meet in the winter, and they're talking about going upstate. My first reaction was, let's just worry about getting through this week's practice and next week's meet. We had started out as a four-by-one team, but as the season progressed, it was a little more natural that we went to four-by-four. And in doing so, we kind of maintained a record that Baldwin's always had as being a great four-by-four school. And that proved out, because as we got towards the end of the season, the times were coming down, the competition was pretty stiff, and these guys, they really prevailed. And in the county meet, we wound up taking second, and we lost to Syasit by literally hundreds of a second. Well, the following week, we come back to the state qualifiers, and we beat them to go upstate. So we go upstate, and I'm sitting up in the bleachers, because that's where the coaches have to sit at that point, and, you know, after the preliminary round, we made it back. Emerson Felix was one of the key proponents to this team. He was on the first leg, because Pascal was long-jumping and triple-jumping. And that was going on the same time that the semifinal heat went on. We made it back to the finals. It was one of the most fantastic races I've ever seen in my life. We're at the state, we're at Cornell University in their fieldhouse, and these guys put a great show on. We took first, first in New York State as a four-by-four Absolutely amazing. You know, last year, we won the counties. We were co-county champions, and I didn't think you could top that, but these guys went and topped it in the winter. We're just, it was, for me, I didn't need the bus to come home. I could've just flown home all by myself. But I know these guys, they're great leaders, they're hard workers, and when you think about it, for practice, they have to warm up, they have to run. For their workout, they have to run. For their cooldown, they have to run. They gotta do a lot of running, and they do a great job of it. And not only that, but they're great students, they're great kids, their parents are proud. I'm proud of them. It's a pleasure to me to come down here every day and coach these guys. I look forward to it. It's the highlight of my day, to be honest with you. So, really gonna be missed. And New York And Pascal Bastian, he, yes, Pascal's not here. Pascal, the first night we showed up for our first indoor winter meet, Pascal hit the state standard for the long jump and I believe the triple jump. And he just came over, he had a smile from ear to ear, and he's like, "Coach, I hit the standard," which pretty much means you're guaranteed to trip upstate. Well, as we're going upstate on the bus, the talk was, you know, who should represent Nassau County in the parade that they have before the meet starts? And me being, you know, sort of like the rookie on the bus, I suggested that Pascal. Well, everybody said that was the greatest choice that could've been made. And Pascal, he went on to win the best field athlete in Nassau County. He got, you guys are probably gonna laugh, but he got the biggest plaque I've ever seen in my life. Everybody else got this regular plaque. Pascal has, Pascal just racks up awards. Pascal's a very humble person. I think Pascal could do just about anything you ask him to. I think he could throw the shot in the disc. A little example of him doing just about anything, in our second or third meet of the season, Pascal decided to run the 110 hurdles. Pascal ran it, and he's ranked fourth in the county. He's a triple jumper, he's a leg of the four-by-four, he's a long jumper, he's, he runs the 100, which he just did this past week. We had our divisions Monday. Pascal ran a 10.9, which wound up taking him second, and he won the long jump and the triple jump. So this Tuesday and Wednesday is our county meet, and if you're not doing anything, come to Westbury, and you can watch some of the fastest people on earth run around Westbury's track. Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, the girls' track indoor varsity coach, Mr. Paul Schaefer.
How do you follow the fastest people on earth? Well, the finish line is in sight, folks. It's coming. We're in the homestretch. I'd like to introduce Galise Gondre and Crystal They're being honored tonight for their accomplishments this past winter season. And, well, we'll start with Galise, since she's closest. High honor roll distinction. She's a National Honor Society member. She has belonged to the Baldwin Leos Club for her entire time in high school, and as part of the Wind Symphony, has played at Carnegie Hall. The, that's gonna present a problem on Tuesday, because she's doing NISM while the county meet's going on, but we'll worry about that another day. The winter, she was the, she was a conference, all-conference 55-meter hurdle, all-county 55-meter hurdle, and at the state qualifier, well, it's the way our sport goes, missed the state meet by three one-hundredths of a second. Okay, now, this season, well, as we've noted, we're gonna find out some things that'll happen this week, and we'll see how this season goes for other awards. Galise will be attending Adelphi University in the fall. Crystal is surprised that I'm pronouncing your name correctly for the first time in four years, but that's the way. She was all-conference in the 1,000 meters. She was all-county in the 1,000 meters, and at the state qualifier, did indeed qualify for the state meet. Where she came home, there's this little intersectional relay that they put together, which is the third, basically the third-place person, and so it was four different schools making up this relay of a 200, a 400, and 800, and a mile. And they came home with the fifth-place in New York State and the sixth place in the Federation medals. She has been a member of athletes helping athletes. She's on the yearbook club, was on the yearbook club. She is now Class of 214, 2014 Committee, and she will be attending
Just wanna say thank you to the coaches. You can see from their speeches how passionate they are about what they do, but more importantly, the bond they have with their athletes. They make my job so much easier, and I know the impact that they have on the daily lives of the young men and women they work with. So just thank you for giving of your time and everything you do for these young people. Thank you. Have a good night.
So I think we're probably just about ready for a break. I do have to take a moment, because tonight is about honoring the students, it's about honoring the parents, it's about honoring the coaches. In the beginning, I missed that he was here, but the coach for that movie, Mr. Vinny Lees. But we have a great many things to be proud of here in Baldwin, and a great many of those things are in the room with us tonight. That's the students that you send us to work academically, to work in extracurricular activities, to work athletically, and you hear tonight how well they blend all of those things together. So thank you very much for sending us those students. Congratulations to each of the students, and let's go have some refreshments in the dining hall.